Order and we'll begin with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Julie?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Mr. Buckey?
Someone's in our waiting room. Well Nate, I think just got on.
Okay.
You want me to admit them and then if they don't belong, we'll just delete them?
Yeah, that sounds good.
I just said do this.
Is that Steve's phone?
Uh, I'm on some kind of no phone, Jim. I can um, hear you very well and I'll just proceed the way I'm doing it. I can't see you, but I can hear and that's fine with me.
Okay, have we determined who the phone is?
Who is uh, the telephone?
It's Nate Buckey's cellphone number.
Who was on the phone, please?
Can you hear me?
Mine is turned off, just so you know.
The number is uh, eight oh two, two six seven four. Would you please identify yourself?
That's me. Yeah, that's, that's, that's me. My computer wouldn't connect. So that's me.
Got it.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Your mouse down Jake.
I can't hear Dana. Is that you Dana?
So if we would all mute, please, uh, to begin.
Jim, I'll just stay quiet. I have some issues going on here with the everything here at the office.
Okay, hold on to those papers, Steve. Hold on.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, so uh, prior to uh, our regular meeting, we have a uh, public hearing, truth in budget and taxation hearing, and uh, for that, we will turn it over to John.
Good evening. It's the time of year again. Um, from a legal compliance point of view, the district's required to hold this hearing. Um, it's really to me compliance with a couple of existing laws. Um, first, the Public Act of uh, two oh six of eighteen ninety-three, section two eleven, and then compliance with the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, um, Public Act two of nineteen sixty-eight. Really, the purpose of the hearing is to um, bring up in a public meeting specifically um, addressing the coming year's levy request, tax levy request. Now, these are new taxes or levies requests for this coming year based on prior approved taxes. Um, on a summary basis, the, we're proposing a tax levy to be applied July one, and we do levy as a district for a hundred percent levy in the July levy. And, oh, thank you Marion. Um, in terms of what we're, we're expecting in terms of estimated revenue generation, general fund operating millage tax, about eight million five hundred twelve thousand dollars. On a building and site sinking fund, we're expecting to generate four million one hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred dollars. And that the district's uh, debt service funds looking, we're gonna generate about sixteen million and fourteen thousand dollars for an estimated total levy of twenty-eight million six hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred dollars. Um, just by reference with respect to people's personal property, for every hundred thousand dollars of taxable value, um, it generates, one mil generates a hundred dollars of taxable value. So, in terms of the compliance piece and specifics to, we'll include our, our technical form, which is called the L four oh two nine. That's actually the legal form that's approved by the board and passed on to our um, our, our debt service or our debt levying entities, our townships that comprise our school district. So in terms of the general fund and what's gonna happen next year, um, the way the process works, there's analysis that is done. And the tax, the amount of taxes are allowed to be levied by the district are constrained by existing law. And really, um, if a community is built, is uh, expanding from growth, and there's some, a little bit of inflation involved. This mechanism is to limit the growth in tax to only inflation and any real new tax base. Lots of times you'll get, in the past, in the, in the, in the distance past, um, tax levies used to inflate simply from inflation, which was uh, taken care of through this, this process. So in terms of the general fund, if you recall, we, the community actually authorized back in November of twenty fourteen, an authorized millage levy of twenty point two five mil. Um, knowing that legally a district can only levy eighteen mils for their operating purposes, and the difference of the two mil, two and a quarter mils is what's known as the um, heavily hold harmless section of the levy. And what that really does for a district is, is each year when we go through this process, that authorized levy is, is reduced by what's known as the millage reduction fraction. So this year, that fraction is at point nine eight two six. So practically speaking, as this goes, applied each year, that twenty point two five mils that's authorized for a legal application for levy, that gets reduced each year by a little bit. And the goal of having it at twenty point two five is to always keep it above the eighteen mil legal levy point. So for this year, that, that twenty point two five has been reduced down to eighteen, excuse me, eighteen mils, eighteen point nine one nine seven mils. But legally, we'll levy eighteen mils. And the, the, the purpose behind the uh, what's known as the hold harmless, the heavily adjusted amount in terms of the levy, the way school funding works, um, the state expects all districts to levy the eighteen operating mills. And if you get knocked down below eighteen mils through the process we're talking about tonight, say, say our millage reduction fraction pushed us down to seventeen point five mil. The, the state does not hold you harmless to that. We would have, we'd be outright losing several hundred thousand dollars for that process. Um, I'm getting a bit in the weeds there, but in terms of the uh, general fund mill, the levy request is for eighteen mils for July, which is the standard levy amount, and the expectation from the state. With respect to our debt, debt service mills, when bonds are authorized by the public, they also authorize the district the authority to levy taxes on the commu- authorizing community to pay for the bonds. Our levy, our levy is set at seven point four nine one mils. Because it's not, and it's on bonds, it's unlimited levy, so it doesn't get impacted by the millage reduction fraction. So again, this coming years, we'll be, we'll be levying seven point four nine one mils. And then in terms of our building and site fund, it is impacted by the millage reduction fraction. So original, the original authorized levy was um, two, two mils. Over the years, it's now being knocked down and reduced because of the millage reduction fraction. So for this year coming up in July, we'll be requesting a levy of one point nine two six five mil. So all of those uh, four position decimal numbers I just, um, just mentioned there, generate the estimated total levy of twenty-eight million, hundred forty-six thousand that I had mentioned. Um, one of the obligations of the compliance hearing is to publish and provide a draft budget for the general fund for the coming year. Um, I believe that was included in the packet. Um, yep, there is on the screen. Again, this is a draft and it represents um, as of this time, because the time of this particular year, it's very uncertain in terms of going to be landing in, in budget. So this draft incorporates a lot of the things we do think we understand at this point impacting next year, as well as um, the ending of this year. So you will notice that um, as we get later in tonight's agenda, we talk about a first reading of the final amendment. That is uh, the first reading, for that amendment, numbers are different than what you see here in front of you. The draft that's in front of you incorporates the expected, um, what's known as a negative budget supplemental, we're expecting from the state either later this month or next month. Um, versus what's rea- for first reading, where it's the straight up number, doesn't have the supplemental, and I'll bring that back up when we get to that point in the agenda further down. But at this point, this is the draft of a estimated expectation, general fund only, to meet the compliance of the uh, truth in taxation and budget hearing. Be happy to handle any, or ask any, or respond to any questions?
Questions for John? I think part of this will become clearer when we get into the next section and you review the other documents that we uh, will be reviewing tonight. Yes, Jake? Jake? You're muted.
He needs to be unmuted.
Jake, you're muted. Julie, can you take his mute off?
Yeah. Marion, do you have him muted?
Uh, my uh, control is disabled on him. I'm trying to unmute it and it won't allow me to do it. There we go. No. Marion, you're muted still, so whatever you're saying, I'm not sure if you're, you have something locked on him maybe?
I think Jake's gonna sign back in. We'll uh, we'll pause. Are there any other questions for John on this?
I can't unmute him.
I can't either.
I think he's gonna try to sign back in. Jake, will it unmute now?
There we go.
There he goes.
You're unmuted Jake.
No, we still can't hear him.
Turn your volume up.
I don't think that will matter.
Is your headset plugged in? Hey Jake, can you uh, text your uh, question to me? Okay. All right. We got an X in that box.
Why don't you, um, Jake, if you're, where'd you go?
I think he's going to try to reconnect.
Yeah.
We'll pause for a moment.
Just by way of background, all the levies that we talked about in terms of the hearings so far, they're all existing. Nothing is a new levy, it's just the annual compliance obligation. In the process in which the board actually authorized a specific levy point to be passed on to our tax collecting authority.
John, have you gotten any, any further word uh, through your circles on what kind of operation is being discussed?
Um, at this point, it's still hovering in the neighborhood of, you know, based on the assumption of the one point two billion dollar um, shortfall in the school aid fund.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, that's the total school aids, so personally speaking, the um, you know, the, the school piece, K twelve piece reduces from there. So we're still in the six hundred to seven hundred dollar range per student.
Okay.
There's a lot of things from what I understand potentials, but it's a case of my perspective, I'm gonna believe it when I see it.
Oh yeah. We've been, we've seen this movie once before.
Now, I just admitted Jake, but I don't see him. We were doing so good with all of this. Oh, he says he's joining. That's what I was looking for.
He just texted me that he's still trying to rejoin.
Okay.
I have Jim and John unmuted.
Right.
Why does it say he's on yet?
Okay, here he comes.
Yep.
All right, can you hear us now?
Jake? Let's see.
Connecting to audio. Can you hear us now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
You know what? Don't mute yourself. Just be real quiet.
I have a mute on my desktop that I normally use, that it doesn't show you that I mute, but that's okay. Uh, so we're, you were waiting for me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, nice. Okay, John, the question was about the millage reduction factor, because we, is there a different factor for the headly on the sinking fund versus the non-homestead?
Yes, it is. Yes, it's a different um, different fraction. It's supposed to reflect because it's a larger base and some other pieces involved with it, but in terms of the actual sinking fund, the reduction itself, or the, the factor is point nine nine oh three. So the math of that is, whatever we levied last year, it gets multiplied by that new millage reduction fraction, a point nine nine oh three, and that produces this year's, this year's proposed levy, as you'll see on the documents in the pack.
Yep. Yeah, it only mentioned one millage reduction factor at the top, and then it wasn't that millage reduction factor on, on the sinking fund. So this, is it because the sinking fund also has residential property in?
Yeah, it's all property.
It's all property.
And it tends to be, it tends to be a, a less um, what's the best way to, a less damaging fraction? It's point nine nine for the sinking fund, it's point nine eight on the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other questions for John regarding the hearing? All right, hearing none. Uh, the truth in budget and taxation hearing is uh, now closed. All right, we'll move on to our next item. Our communications update, and before we go to Mark, I um, would like to go to Marion, and these ever-changing times that we face in our country, we uh, uh, it seems we have a new challenge and a new uh, set of uh, the factors to consider as we go on, and um, uh, Marion has spoken to this on behalf of our district and has communicated with the families, uh, as well as the board and the administrators. And um, I ask her if she could read that statement tonight for the record uh, as a statement on behalf of the entire Lake Orion Community Schools.
Okay. Uh, what I uh, shared with our families, dear Lake Orion Community Schools families, the past three months have unsettled our world like few times in modern history. But the past week, watching the African-American citizens of our country speak with a loud speak with a loud, oh, this isn't, to share their injustice, has reminded of what this nation of public education is about. As an educator for over fifty years, I've experienced dramatic shifts in educational philosophy, learning styles, technology, and student expression. But the overwhelming change is less tangible and far more important. Embracing the diversity of people regardless of race, gender, and ethnicity. Watching our country on edge, responding to George Floyd's senseless death reinforces the importance of our schools and what our students learn. Our kids learn acceptance as we've shown through the action of the Lake Orion High School led by our diversity and equity coordinator, Michelle Purton. They learn action in the middle school, in lessons of leadership, and they learn connection at our youngest age, introduced to their classmates as friends with no barrier. Discussing our nation's unrest would be difficult enough if we were in school building, but even more so remotely, which is more of a challenge. But we're here as staff members for our students and staff to explain what we can and help talk through what we can't. Seeing the peaceful protests shares a bedrock value of our nation. Citizens attempting to show passion. Seeing the destruction from those co-opting the protests for their own personal ill can be a lesson that there is always an opportunity to make a better choice, to heal instead of harm. Our mission is teaching, and this week reminds that these values of acceptance, inclusion, a support in supporting others are critical to us as a school district and a society. And more important, our citizens of our country have to listen and support everyone around us, lifting their voice. As individuals, we can control our actions and impact on those around us. But as a larger group, a class, a school, a district, or a community, we must all be a part of unity and healing.
Thank you Marion, and you uh, represent well the sentiment of all of us, I'm sure, as well as uh, the sentiment throughout the community and our Lake Orion Community Schools. And uh, it's our job to carry on with that outlook. I appreciate your drafting that and sending it to, to the families. So we'll move to Mark now for further communications. Mark?
Hey, great, thank you Jim. Um, we just met last week, so there's only a little bit to talk about, but there's some great things that are happening still. Uh, Melissa Wilson was honored, who is at our LA, uh, LHS art teacher, she was the National Honor Society Advisor, and she was the outstanding National Honor Society, Arts Society Sponsor Award this year, which is very exciting, and she just received that this week, which is very exciting. Um, the high schools had a lot going on, and they had a walk, uh, last week would have been the last day for the seniors, last Friday, so uh, what they did is a bunch of the seniors sent in videos of them walking out of their homes instead of walking out of the school, and we saw, you know, those seniors walk out, and it was kind of a cool thing for them to be able to have a moment, you know, even though they're stuck at home, to have kind of a summation of the end of their high school days in class, let's say. Um, and then today was the pickup day, and there was a lot of celebration, I'm sure, honey, can address that a little bit more, but it was an opportunity for them to come and get, the seniors to get their caps and gowns. There was a number of teachers there connecting with them and celebrating them and everything, and that was really nice. So we saw that. Um, there, as I mentioned last week, and now it's out there for everyone, there's a field trip of the tour of Lake Orion, the second graders did, but we shared it widely. So anyone can see that um, in our community who can see, learn about the history, that former teacher Kathy McMinn took everyone on a little bit of a tour, which is kind of cool, so if you've all seen that, that would be great. Um, the board, you guys shared a wonderful video thanking our teachers at the end of last week, and that was very well received by the community, got a lot of views, and people really appreciate, the teachers appreciated that, and so did the parents as well. And the Orion Living Magazine came out um, online, and it's in, it's printed as well, but I think there's not as much distribution now as there has been in the past, obviously, because of our circumstances. But you can see it where it highlighted our special education department and all the different things that we're very proud of, you know, that we've done with the special education, and a note from Marion in there discussing the challenges that are, and the impressive work our district has done during the pandemic. Any questions?
Questions for Mark? Before we move on from this item too, I'd like to uh, uh, extend a special thanks to, to Nate and his efforts on putting together that video on behalf of all of us and sending it out to the uh, our uh, staff. Uh, it was his brainchild, and uh, he helped get us focused on it and helped us work out bugs along the way, and then uh, edited and got it out. Uh, we appreciate that. Thank you Nate. Yes? Can't hear you Nate.
TPW, class of uh, nineteen ninety-one, or ninety to ninety-two.
There it is, shout out. All right, thank you. All right, moving along, strategic area discussion items, we'll start with governance and the superintendent's update. You're muted Marion.
The first thing which is on your agenda is the annual authorization of the MHS double A, the High School Athletic Association, uh, membership. Uh, you've all had an opportunity to look at that. It was in your packet, and that will be for approval, uh, which we do annually. If anybody has any questions?
Any questions on that? Pretty standard. We do it each year. It's required for us, uh, for our schools to participate in any kind of uh, high school athletic association tournaments to be a member of that organization. All right.
Hearing none. I'll move on to the next one. Uh, the board president and perhaps other board members received uh, some communication from the West Bloomfield School District regarding uh, their desire to go for a, uh, an enhancement millage. Uh, this is something that I have brought to this board before, and we've discussed. Um, I am going to strongly advise our board not to support that. Uh, the way it was presented was that it was on behalf of the West Bloomfield Board President and the Superintendent. Just as a little bit of more recent background, um, as I have shared with you in the past, I was the chair of that original committee about a year and a half, two years ago, where we were looking at going for a countywide enhancement millage, and we did an extensive amount of legwork. When we brought it to the entire superintendent group, the uh, consensus of the group was that because so many districts had already other kinds of uh, financial obligation, bonds, uh, millages and so forth, up for a ballot, that they did not want to pursue it at that time. This year, I brought it back to the group because as I'm leaving, I wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same uh, kind of page and line on this enhancement millage. And um, we, uh, I will tell you that overwhelmingly, the superintendents were definitely opposed to proceeding. The request from West Bloomfield is to go for this enhancement millage in November, which is the presidential election. Um, and I have responded to West Bloomfield Superintendent telling him that I was advising our board not to support that at this time. Because what I see happening is they are subverting a process that really needs to be in place. I'm gonna ask Bergit, because she has been involved with this as well, to kind of pipe in on this, Bergit? And I think Jim had something to say too.
Um, uh, yeah, I, when, this came to my attention from a colleague from another district, actually from West Bloomfield, and when she um, put it up back on my radar, I was a bit stunned because I thought it had kind of died on the vine, so to speak, last November, so when this came back up, it, it pretty much stunned me. Um, for a myriad of reasons. One of them was that even her, this board, West Bloomfield, was actually against it originally. Um, as this was coming back up, and their superintendent and board president have just kind of pushed forward with it. Last night, they did pass a resolution, the West Bloomfield Board, to um, to support this at a five to one vote. Um, I am completely against this, and I don't, I had the privilege of looking at some of the numbers, and if you were, had the opportunity to look at some of the documentation, it's even kind of put together a little sloppy, and it, to me, it's embarrassing, and I for various reasons would not want this pushed forward to my community. In fact, I have no idea what you all feel like, but I would want us to take the opposite stand. I would rather pass a resolution against this. I am that against putting this tax through the voters. We have no idea what the state's going to do. We pushed forth a sinking fund and a bond and had that passed. And I don't think our community for sure, and granted, this is a countywide millage, not just a Lake Orion, but I'm convinced our constituents would not be in support of this, and would be pretty upset with us if we did support it. So that's just my two cents worth, and um, thank you for letting me share that with you.
The um, it, the, when I mentioned the process, part of the process is it requires boards of education to support this, that's one thing. It also has to go to the Oakland Schools Board of Education, which it has not. So there, as I said, they're really subverting to the So there, as I said, they're really subverting the entire process. Now, would it be nice to have that extra money for our students? Yes. Is this the climate to be asking our voters for more money? I say absolutely not. So that's my two cents. Not right now.
And may I add that in the limited communications among board presidents, there were, there were voices in opposition to this among the presidents, but there were no voices other than West Bloomfield who were in favor of moving forward on this. And I would echo what Burgett said about the documents that had been assembled. For lack of a better description, it's a bit of a slapdash approach to this and really is, is not a way to approach this for any district in our county. And I would agree wholeheartedly that this is not for Lake Orion at this time. Any questions for Marion on this? Marion has been involved for quite some time with this issue.
Unfortunately, that I don't have to do that anymore either because it really has been very controversial at best. The only other district I'm aware of that was in support was Avondale. So I received an email from one of my colleagues, said that they have something on the ballot in August, so there's no way they would want something like this, so.
This, this does appear to be a bit of an end run kind of flavor like we encountered with the IA Board and changes in governance that we went through about a year and a half ago. So, yes, Jake?
So Marion, the discussions that you had about this occurred post-COVID. So post, once, once the superintendents and everybody was aware that, that there's a potential several hundred dollar cut, the superintendents are still again trying to do some measure of insulation against the state.
That's not accurate. We, the meeting where we discussed it and did not reach consensus, in fact, the majority were against it, was pre-COVID because it was a face to face meeting at the ISD. However, since that time, which is when West Bloomfield sent out the information, the feedback I'm receiving is not in support of it, which would be post, post the COVID.
As is the case from the superintendents who have responded in the superintendent, I'm sorry, board presidents' discussion through email. That is very recent, within the last week and a half. And my understanding is this has to be, all districts have to be on board to move forward with this with Oakland Schools, is that correct?
A majority have to.
Yes.
Not all of them.
By student population count.
Right. But I have, my response has been this to them. I, it's not that I'm not in support of the concept. I'm not in support of doing it without a process in place. One of the steps in the process, which is critical, is to poll different communities to see what, where they're at. Another process is it has to go to the ISD. So in order, and I certainly am not in favor of it going on the November ballot. I think that's rushing it. However, I think that it has merit, and it does have potential. Macomb passed theirs, but that was pre-COVID. That was, I can't even remember, John wouldn't know when they passed theirs. It was probably.
February, I believe.
February or something. Wayne has passed one, Kent has passed one. So I'm not saying that I'm against doing it. I just feel that the timing is very inappropriate, and I feel that the process, it, by not following a process, you're really going to mess up the whole thing. Right now, as Burgett mentioned, our community has supported us in a millage, an enhancement or a bond, a sinking fund. They renewed our eighteen mills, and I am not, this is my opinion, would not burden them at this time with another tax.
Okay, any other questions for Marion on this issue? Steve? You're muted there, Steve.
Thank you, Jim. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, just a comment, and what Marion said is a hundred percent correct. Let's see, Paul from Lieutenant Paul, they need support and help. We have a police millage up also, and they're in competition with the fire millage, which they were promised that the fire millage people would not put it on. So I agree with Marion's thoughts. We'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Jake?
I'll go with what Marion said. So I very much appreciate your background and insight because when I saw it, I said, wow, this is a good idea. Like we, the financial independence away from the state at this time is, is very important. But given the perspective you gave, that it's, it's rushed, it's not well thought out, and this isn't something you should bring back to the voters time and time and time again until you eventually get a yes. So let's, I'm in support of the concept, but let's get it to be a better concept. And then maybe we as a board can decide that, that we would want to be one of the boards that help put it on the ballot. So thank you for your insight, Marion.
I can tell you that John, John would definitely be in favor of doing this. We've talked about it, and if the timing were right, you know, the extra money would be fabulous. You're talking about four hundred and some dollars more per child. So like I said, I'm supportive of it. It's just not the right time. And they better put it, do it right or don't do it at all. So, thank you. So that's, may I move on to my next item?
Yes, please.
I have a couple of things. The International Academy graduation is Sunday, June the seventh. It is all pre-recorded. One of the superintendents in the International Academy Consortium from Birmingham is kind of taking the lead on accepting their kids virtually. Our, it's a little confusing. Jim, I believe that you and I are somehow involved, but we're pre-recorded, where we will accept our students. So if, if you would like to watch it, I believe I sent you the, the link. Okay, if anybody wants to watch it. Normally, if last year, I believe Burgett went, didn't you go, Burgett? Yeah, last year. The next thing is, we were going to do a military graduation. We have about, I don't know, six or seven students, seniors, who were going into the military. And our high school administrators felt that because they would not be around when we are going to do the regular graduation, that they would hold a separate ceremony for the military grads to honor those kids who would be going into the service prior to any formal graduation or informal, however, we're going to do our graduation. So just before this meeting started, I received an email from Dan. It turns out that their basic training, which was scheduled for within the next couple of weeks, has been postponed till August. So there is no need for a military graduation. So I was going to ask Jim to participate in that or any one of you, but you don't have to worry about that now. So that's off the table.
Great.
And right now, I think that's all I've got for now.
All right. Thank you very much. And we will move on to Policy Committee Report. Who's going to handle that tonight?
I will be handling the Policy Committee Report this evening. We met this, Friday, is that right? Two days are run together for you guys. So we met Friday, and I will say kudos to this team. And I also want to let everyone know that this has been a long time in the making, this remote participation policy. Aside from the current Policy Committee and last year's Policy Committee working on this off and on, it's come up a few times in the past. And so it seems to have come full circle and evolved, especially given our current culture. What you have in your packets tonight represents what we discussed in committee. There's one minor change on page, page thirty-four of your board packet, where we are recommending to change, a wording change of, instead of saying the board president, we're saying the presiding officer. On page thirty-six, we've reworked the wording of the new policy, uh, excuse me, the new bylaw, bylaw zero one six two point one, entitled Remote Meeting Access. The whole thing's new, but what we reworked in the Friday meeting was, is now highlighted in yellow. We are going to refer you to an additional verbiage that we've created for the Board Operating Procedures, which is now page eight of seventeen of the Board Operating Procedures, but page forty-four of your board packet. Julie's completely highlighted it in yellow, so it's really easy to see when you get there. And that constitutes the guidelines of how we are recommending to move forward with remote participation as it applies to board members. We've given some guidelines for possible reasons. We've given the board president the ability to move beyond allotted three times a year for a board member to be able to utilize remote participation. And we are also allowing this to move into closed session with the caveat that you cannot use closed session for remote participation if we have a student concern, a disciplinary hearing, or a staff disciplinary hearing or staff concern. Other than that, you would be permitted to utilize remote participation for a closed session as well. Think I've covered that.
Okay.
I am actually okay with it as it is written with these guidelines, and I want to open it up to anybody that might have comments at this point.
Questions, comments, conversation? Yes, Scott?
Just to kind of back up on the, thank you, Burgett, that was perfect. Just to kind of back up on the conversation, when we started on Friday, it was good that we had had our board meeting previously, that we had a closed session, obviously, that we did. We were all remote. And we were talking about being able to participate in closed sessions. And Jake made a great point that, he said, there was nothing that happened on the closed session on Wednesday night that, that I couldn't be listened to and, and, and participating in because it, there wasn't a kid sitting there, there wasn't a teacher sitting there or a staff member that was, that was a disciplinary in action or whatever. So that's kind of where we were drawing the line that, you know, if, if we are, if someone is ill or on the road for business, and we're talking about negotiations or we're talking about property or things like that, those are things that we would, we feel that everybody should be able to participate in. And obviously, we still know that state law tells us that if it's in closed session, you can't talk about it and, and things like that. But we, we were more protecting students and, and the privacy of students and the privacy of employees by, you know, if, if those things were happening, not allowing the participation.
Yes, Jake?
Yeah, something that you had said, Steve, stuck with me, that you said, look them in the eye. And when we're dealing with our own attorney, it's not that big of a deal to look them in the eye. They're giving us an update. John and Rick gave us an update about property and negotiations at the, at the last. But if it's a student or an employee, and we've been in those sensitive topics, it, it wouldn't be fair to that student to say, now, who is that voice that's on the phone that I can't see? So we, so this was our, our compromise to say, we think it's a good balance of the intent of what we thought we heard from you. So I'd like to hear from you and, and, and others that worked in, in, in the committee meeting to say, you know, what are your thoughts about, about what's been put out there?
Others? Yes, Steve? You're muted, Steve. Still muted? Can you unmute, Steve? Yep, can't do it.
Hold on.
Go ahead now.
Thank you. Can you, everybody hear me?
Yeah.
I just want to thank Jake and the committee. I'm fully satisfied and on board. And the questions I had, and the legal question I had, I was completely wrong on it, everybody. I'm completely wrong. So thank you for the education, and I'm on board.
Others, others. Dana, do you want to weigh in?
Um, no, I think I'm really good with it. The only question I have is presiding officer, why is that term being used instead of president?
There, we have the potential for the president to not be there. So if it's the next, if the vice president is running the meeting, it should be the presiding officer actually fits.
Okay, and I guess we're kind of leaving it up to the president to say, you know, if it's okay if the person does more than three meetings and that type of thing. I mean, is there something where if the board feels like it's getting out of hand with a board member that we can definitely approach the Policy Committee or the Board and say, you know what? We think the president is getting a little out of hand condoning some of these things. And, you know, I just want to make sure there's, there's something in place, so.
That's always our prerogative, Dana. You know, if, if we feel that something's amiss, that, you know, first, we would obviously go to the president and, and express our issue. And if we don't feel like it's solved, then we should have a discussion about it, I believe.
Okay, okay, then I'm going to, thank you.
I would agree. I think it's a reasonable, well-thought-out approach. And, and it's a good starting point for us to move forward with this. Any others? Nate, did you want to weigh in?
Nope, all good. Appreciate the Policy Committee. That's a lot of work to do it and a fast turnaround. Appreciate it.
I would just like to add that I, I think this was well worth the long journey it took to get to the final product because this is a well-thought-out product. And I think it reflects where we want to be moving forward in light of our current day and our current challenges, and also having an element of structure to it that lets everybody know that that's how we're going to move forward, and it's not an open-ended proposition. So I want to just thank the Policy Committee for slugging it out and bearing with all the questions and coming out with a great end product. I really appreciate it, and I think, I think the board will be very satisfied with this now and well into the future. I did have one question about the letter D on the, on the operating procedures versus the remote, the zero one six two point one. The closed session statement does not necessarily agree between those two. The one speaks to the exceptions, the other one doesn't.
Yeah, it was very specific to say that one is an operating procedure that says you have to maintain your own environment of privacy. And the other one was more of a rule base that said this is when you can and can't do it. So after consultation of the Policy Committee, and we talked to Marion and Burgett experienced, they, they said that, that's why one goes in one section and one goes in the other. And you shouldn't say something that, a bylaw in a, or a policy in a board operating procedure or vice versa. So, and then the other thing that will be down the line that we said is for administrative guidelines, we would also allow if there's an illness or a travel situation that one of, a member of cabinet could also participate remotely. But we talked about that and said, nope, that's administrative guidelines, so leave that. So leave that to another section. So everything in its place.
Okay. As long as, uh, as long as we're clear on it, and, uh, it's clear in the document. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you again. Uh, we'll move on to Board Self-Assessment Committee Report.
Board Self-Assessment Committee has nothing to report this evening.
Thank you very much. Student achievement, Heidi.
All right, good evening. Uh, Marion's going to pull up the update for, uh, tonight. This, um, highlights the week of May twenty-fifth, and this week, uh, last week and this week, we've had two weeks of professional development that's been offered to teachers. And some of those sessions were required, while others were optional. We had, uh, varying topics. And so, um, some of them were dealing with topics regarding curriculum, and we've also had topics, uh, with Microsoft Teams for remote learning. Once this week concludes, our coaches will be moving toward, um, developing a professional development series on remote learning and the flipped classrooms. So, uh, that will take place during the summer. Surveys were sent to students, parents, and staff. They were sent on Monday, and they are due, uh, June eighth. And so we will see, um, what everybody has to say regarding remote learning, and that will be taken into consideration as we are making plans for the fall. As Mark had mentioned, seniors had their pickup and drop-off day today, and I know that that went very well. Having a senior, uh, myself, she was excited to come home with her cap and gown, and immediately had to try it on. So I'm hoping that a lot of seniors had a good day today, uh, picking up all of their stuff, and then got home to try on all of their goods. And they are looking forward to, hopefully, being able to wear, um, their graduation, uh, gown soon. So that was great for them. So kudos and a huge thank you to all of the high school staff. We also had a lot of administrators across the district help out today. So I think they made it a special day, so thank you to them. Developmental kindergarten, uh, we were not able, uh, to conduct a street, a screening this year. Typically, we screen all of our students to make the best determination as to who needs developmental kindergarten and who should start in kindergarten. Obviously, that was not able to be done this year. So we went by birthdays, um, and we had seventy-seven requests, uh, for DK spots. We did hold a lottery, uh, just in case a family did not get their first choice of a building. Uh, all seventy-seven students received a DK spot, however, and, um, parents, I think notification has already gone out. I think it went out, I believe, yesterday, so... Summer school, we have decided we will run an elementary and middle school summer school. It will be virtual. Information went out today to families, so we are looking forward to that. Our Fall Planning Committee, we have a committee that has a weekly standing, uh, meeting, and so we just meet weekly. We're working on the different scenarios that we may find ourselves in in the fall. And so, you know, I just want you to be aware that this committee continues to meet weekly, and we communicate quite a bit during the week via email, keeping track of, um, what other districts are doing, the articles that are coming out, and, um, keeping up to date on what other, uh, schools across the country are doing too, as well as the CDC, uh, guidelines as they come out. Additionally, another big job that the coaches have been working on, they have met with all grade levels of teachers, particularly at the elementary level. Uh, they have been working on our curriculum maps. Obviously, all of these maps have been needing to be, have needed to be adjusted because of what we have gone through with the pandemic. So all curriculum maps have been adjusted for the fall. And, um, we had to take into account some of the things that had been missed, uh, during this COVID closure. So that was quite a large task that coaches and teachers worked on, so that's good to have that done. I believe that concludes the, yep, the student achievement part. And then today was bond meeting day. And so, um, the first meeting was the, uh, I met with our furniture designers, and we started talking about our secondary furniture pilot. We're, we're not, we're slightly behind, um, but we had extra time built into the timeline, thank goodness. Uh, the one thing I am a little bit disappointed about is that our elementary pilot group, we were able to take tours to other districts to see different kinds of furniture. Obviously, this will not be able to happen with our secondary pilot. However, I have asked GMB to put together a PowerPoint and send us pictures of, uh, districts throughout the state that have recently, um, outfitted their classrooms with new furniture. So we won't be going physically, but I think it's very, very important that this group is able to see what is happening in classrooms across the state. And so, uh, that took, we'll be working on that taking place, as well as, I'll be bringing this group together soon at some point to choose the pilot furniture, and then the expectation will be that furniture will be ordered sometime in September to be delivered in December, uh, just like the elementary, uh, pilot was. And then we will pilot for the remainder of the year and make those choices. So very excited about that. Tomorrow is a really exciting day. Uh, we have our early childhood groundbreaking, and so, um, tomorrow at five o'clock, we'll be kicking that off, and dirt is already, um, being moved on those grounds. So, um, we'll be there. Additionally, uh, going back to today, I'm sorry, I skipped, I skipped two other, um, groups that met. Paint Creek and Stadium, both of their design committees met today. And the big topic, uh, was casework. So, uh, casework in the main office. Um, and so each of the committees went through and tried to determine, um, what kind of casework, countertop, looked at staff mailboxes, um, all of those sorts of things for, um, the main office area and the reception area. Uh, and then next week, I believe, we are starting with elementary and middle school staff laptop distribution and training. So all of our elementary and middle school staff will be getting new laptops, so we're very excited about that. And then, um, hopefully, by the end of this week, I'll be preparing updates for all levels, uh, that will be sent to the staff regarding the bond. Uh, prior to all this, I was communicating quite regularly, uh, specifically with the high school, um, updating them on bond work, and now I'll be doing that with each level, just to kind of keep everybody up to speed on what's happening at each of the levels across the district. So, um, I believe that concludes tonight's report.
Okay, questions for Heidi? Yes, Burgett.
Yeah, Heidi, I have a couple of questions for you, going back to, um, your brief review of fall planning, and that you have a committee that's meeting weekly about that. I am wondering, um, what your, your thoughts are about the CDC guidelines that have been put out? And also, um, there's a press release today from Governor Whitmer's office about the Return to School Advisory Council that she's put together that, oh, has all kinds of people from across the state on it at different levels. I think, I think Superintendent from Rochester is one of them, and all kinds of people. So I was wondering, if you have any idea of what you're going to expect from that? And the CDC guidelines seem basically impossible if we were to take that at face value. So I just wonder, and there are parents talking about this, I'm worried about it already. So I just wanted to bring it up and have you give some kind of opinion, if you're willing.
Yeah, you did say opinion. So, my opinion is that that's on, that's not how we educate children. However, uh, we also, I get the safety piece of it, right? So, um, and these guidelines continue to change. And so, um, you know, right now, I would not say that it, it's just, I, if we were to start school tomorrow with the guidelines that are in place today, I'll be honest with you, I can't imagine it. As an adult, I find it very difficult to wear a mask more than ten minutes. And I'm an adult. And we'll be asking children to do this throughout the school day. Um, you know, some other, you know, areas, the social distancing, again, it, it doesn't lend itself to how we educate children. However, I do get that safety has to be of utmost importance. So we are going to implement what we do need to implement. But I suspect that that will change a little bit. I mean, we have seen things change all along the way. And so, um, we're continuing to watch that. However, I do know that the Governor does have a task force that has been put together. But for us to not start preparing now, I think would be a big mistake. In my opinion, this is something that we need to be, um, planning for and be ready for. And, um, I don't know what, you know, that task force is going to come out. I don't know how much local control that we're going to have. Um, I will tell you that we're, you know, supposedly something's going to come out in early July. I'll be honest, I don't see that happening.
Mid-July.
What was that?
Mid-July.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, the task force just came together. So, you know, it, it's one of those things where we, as a district, I think, the scenarios, right, are pretty, we can figure those out. Um, you know, I have said that we're, we're looking at three different scenarios. One, that we would be all back, um, with some guidelines, I'm sure. Uh, two, that there would be a hybrid, so some students would be, um, working remotely, others would be, you know, in, in the classroom. And then, you know, we would have a schedule and, and, uh, switch. And then the third one, obviously, would be fully remote. So we do know, obviously, that those are one of the three scenarios. And I do think that throughout the year, next year, if we start one way, I'd pretty much bet that it will probably, you know, change throughout the year. That's the other thing I think is really important, that we are prepared to move from one scenario to another as seamlessly as we possibly can. And so we are looking, as we develop each of these plans, that we're able to do that. We're able to move back and forth and pivot quite quickly. Um, not like what happened in the spring. Um, you know, that, what are the things that we have learned from that? The surveys that we have sent out, I think, are going to be critical. We need to know what has worked for our families, what has worked for our staff, and certainly what has and has not worked for our students. And so all of that information will be taken into consideration as we, as we do plan for, uh, for the fall. The other thing I want to assure parents, I hope MDE will allow us to count if we do, um, choose to have a virtual program. That is our intention. I've had several parents that have asked that, for those parents that may not feel comfortable if we are fully back. Um, that, that is another thing that we are preparing for in hope that those hours would count. They do need to, to, they do need to be able to count, of course. But I'm thinking that the MDE will certainly realize that we need to have that this year. So I hope that helps.
Okay, I think, I, I think Steve had a question there before I go to you, Marion. Steve?
You're on mute, Steve.
You're muted there, Steve.
I apologize, everybody. I did have a question, uh, Jim, and everything was addressed, and I appreciate, Heidi, just a comment now. It's a delicate subject, and I spoke to Jim about it. Everything you explained to us gave me a lot of comfort, Heidi. There's a lot of anxiety with our parents, we know that. And I know whatever you may write, or Jim may write, or, um, Ms. Genopoulos may write to the public, we can never be on target, and we can't satisfy everybody. But what you just described to us put me at ease quite a bit. If there's any way we could write a letter, and maybe I'm a hundred percent wrong on this, to let them know this, this, and that. Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yeah, the problem is, right, there's no specifics right now. Like I said, things continue to change.
I'm sorry, Heidi, but even that, to say that, because sometimes people don't know that. And but you're the professional, I'm not in that area.
Well, I, uh, if I, if I could jump in here, Steve, too, the, uh, element of the survey, I think, will be very helpful in that regard, because it does create a, a feedback loop that, uh, once that data is, comes back to the district, that I'm sure that Heidi and the team will have a follow-up to it.
Absolutely.
To really have a meaningful communication, I think we need to get that data back.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I do, I do, I do encourage, I strongly encourage the community to please make sure they take the time to fill that survey out. We did ask to, that, that parents fill out the survey for each of their children. I know that for those families that have multiple children, that's a little extra work, but it does make a difference, because every kid is different. And then we also asked parents to assist their elementary children in filling out the survey, too. So again, I can assure you that this feedback is critical, and it will be looked at and highly taken, you know, into consideration for all of the fall planning we do.
But that's down the road, down the road, Heidi, too. We all agree, or I do, we got a great cabinet, a great superintendent. Everybody, we all work together. But there's panic out there, and I have to be blunt. There's panic for us to wait for a survey to come back, and this and that. I really think some kind of comfort letter to come out to the community and say this, this, and that. What do we got to lose? It's just my opinion. But people are scared, Heidi, and we all know that, we're all scared. But in the same token, we got the inside, not inside info, but we know what's going on based on this meeting. But let's face it, eighty percent, ninety percent of the people out there are not watching this meeting. We need to reach out to the people. And that's all I'll say. And, and I agree, no matter what we say, it's not going to be satisfying to people. But we have to make some kind of effort. And it's just my personal thoughts, and I thank you. I thank you.
Okay, thank you for sharing that, Steve. Uh, Marion?
Couple of things, I want to go back to this committee that Burgett brought up, too. Um, my concern about all of this is the amount of layers that they are putting on things. For instance, the Advisory Committee that was just convened and selected, um, is exactly that, they're advisory. They're going to be advisory to a task force. In other words, the Advisory Committee is not going to be making specific decisions. They're going to advise a predetermined, it's already been in place for a number of probably weeks and weeks, this task force. And they are going to then make recommendations to the legislature and governor, who then will tell us what to do. So keep in mind that there are so many layers. And also keep in mind that I regret to tell you that people in our profession tend to work in silos. So the communication among our, uh, my colleagues in these different task forces, uh, is questionable. The intermediate school district, Oakland Schools, has convened a group of, uh, subcommittees to look at this with each of the superintendent. So I am really concerned about that. What I am not concerned about is what Heidi has taken the lead on, which is developing three very specific possibilities for Lake Orient Community Schools. And that's what I think we need to be really, um, uh, conscious of, that we are looking at it as what is best for our students. And Steve is right. Maybe we should send out a little communication, letting people know that we are in the process. But quite frankly, I don't think that we should be waiting for all of these advisory committees, task forces, subcommittees, and so forth, when in fact... task forces, subcommittees, and so forth, when in fact, I think that we are looking at it very, very carefully. In the words of Mr. Rick Arnett, he says things like, what is it, uh, over, you know, under promise and over perform. And that's kind of what we're in the process of doing, is we don't wanna tell people something that we can't do in the fall. But on the other hand, maybe a brief communication we can put together that just at least, at least alerts them to the fact that we're on this. But quite frankly, I think that what Heidi is doing with our administrators is really right on in terms of where we're going. Those three options are the best options for our students. And the fact that she talked about transition and being able to pivot from one to the other should be really, uh, comforting to all of you. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Others? All right, thank you very much, thank you, Heidi. Moving on, uh, curriculum committee report. I believe we have one tonight, but we have a meeting coming up, is that right? Thumbs up, thank you.
Um, yes, so I'm sorry, there is a meeting, um, tomorrow at 3 o'clock with the curriculum committee.
Great, thank you. Uh, Lamp of Learning Committee Report.
Let me do that, Burgett.
Go for it.
Well, we can both talk, but, um, we are pleased to tell you that we have selected our winners of the scholarships. And we as a committee decided that, uh, we were gonna go above and beyond a little bit. So tomorrow after the groundbreaking, the Lamp of Learning Committee is putting our gowns on and we got signs printed up for each student that won an award and we're gonna go to their houses. Um, we've scheduled it with their parents, the kids don't know about it. So hopefully the kids aren't watching the meeting right now. Um, but if they are, so be it, and good for them. Um, so that, the plan with that is doing it right after the groundbreaking. So if anybody would like to attend and want a reason to put your gown on and come and, you know, it's literally, we're doing one at 6, one at 6:30, one at 7, one at 7:30, two are in the same neighborhood. So, um, it's gonna be fun and I'm very excited about it. I'm glad that it was kinda, uh, Burgett's baby and I think it's awesome and I'm pumped up and I pick, pick up the signs tomorrow.
Great idea.
Good job, no, I'm excited too.
All right, thanks to both of you. And the committee, because that's, that's a big job.
And Dana.
Through those.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Dana.
And Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Everybody knows we couldn't have done any of it without Julie.
There you go. All right, moving on to human resources, Rick.
Yes, good evening, thanks, Jim. Um, not to belabor the previous discussion regarding the uncertainties for the start of the next school year, but I think it's important to put in, put into perspective kinda where we're at today. You know, with, uh, Governor Whitmer issuing Executive Order Number 110 since this started, and that is actually 110, with, uh, the, what people are calling the lifting of the stay-home order. Obviously, we've gotten a lot of questions about, okay, what does that mean for us? Can we start doing this? Can we start doing that and so forth? I think it's important to refer people back to the MI or the Michigan Safe Start Plan, um, because that really spells out a lot of, uh, restrictions and so forth. We've just entered Phase Four, which is called the Improving Phase. And in Phase Four, we're still required to social distance, we're still required to, um, wear masks. K-12 instruction is not allowed to take place in the face-to-face format. The next phase of this is Phase Five, which is Containing. That still carries with it the social distancing, the masks, and the lack of instruction for K-12 in a face-to-face setting. We don't get to that stage until we get to post-pandemic, which is Phase Six. So I think it's important for people to understand and realize, and we're in Phase Four of a phase, of a six-phase plan with education being specified in each of those phases and the whole concept of distance, uh, social distancing and mask-wearing and sanitation and screenings and all of those things are still in play. So this most recent order really hasn't changed much for us as a district. We're continuing to operate, the recommendation is to work remotely as much as feasibly possible. So we are continuing in that vein with our, uh, staff members who are, um, not directly related to the instruction of the students, or our, our office, for instance, they're 12-month employees. Um, our building secretaries for the most part, they're, they're directly related. But we're continuing with the remote, um, work as much as possible. And then when they are in the workplace, we have our protocols in place. Um, we recently, uh, implemented a, an event activity safety protocol. Um, in other words, those groups that do wanna organize certain events, I'll give you an example. The fifth grade student, or the fifth, the elementary principals want to do a fifth grade clap-out for each of the buildings. So we've created it with the help of Mark, we developed a form. And basically, it goes through all of the protocols. Lay out the plan for us, how do you intend to screen those who are going to participate? How are you going to ensure that there's six-foot, uh, social distancing? Who's going to monitor that? Who's gonna be responsible for it? Um, so we've got a, a very comprehensive, um, protocol that requires groups, um, activities. Anyone that wants to put together a function, if you would, that would involve, um, a, a group of people, we need to ensure that we're following all these safety protocols and practices. So that is up and running and in place. We'll continue to use that through, uh, through Phase Five up until post-pandemic. Um, so that's enough on that, our restart committee, we meet on Fridays. We're happy to announce that we've started to receive, um, some of the items that we've ordered. We talked to before that we don't wanna get ahead of the game too much, but we've got 18, um, touchless thermometers that are in now. Uh, we've got excess, I think I've shared with you before, of 10,000 face masks available to us. Uh, we've got 240, John, I believe, is our number of the tank sprayers that you can utilize for disinfecting a classroom or a bus or an area. Um, so we're feeling much better in, in where we're at and, and we haven't over expended, I don't think to a great extent, that these items couldn't be used at a later date. Uh, we meet again on Friday, so we're happy to, to announce that. Um, school's a choice, we have one week left, the application numbers are still down. Uh, but we're hopeful that, uh, we'll, we'll continue to be able to, uh, offer those positions to people. And then finally, my last one is, I'm happy to announce that we have a candidate of choice. Um, yesterday, Heidi, Marion, myself, and John did final round interviews with food service directors and we have a candidate of choice that we'll be bringing forward to you at the next board meeting for formal approval, but, uh, we'll get her up and running and we're already working on transition with Marla, um, for the remainder, the last half of this month. I think, uh, we're in a good spot there. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, questions for Rick? All right, hearing none, we will move on, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Evaluation Committee, we don't have a report this evening. Superintendent Search Committee, uh, we will begin our formal review beginning next Monday. And, uh, at that time, we will, uh, determine the candidates who will, we, who will be moving forward in the process. And, uh, we have a sequence of meetings throughout June. I believe Julie said we have nine meetings this month when she was on Board Book Training. And, uh, uh, so we have a full month ahead of us and we will, uh, stay focused and, uh, be moving forward as of Monday. Uh, on to Finance, John?
Um, next item up is referred to as the tax rate levy, the L4029 form. This is the end product of the earlier, um, Truth and Taxation and Budget Hearing. Um, it said, this document that's in your board packet is the, this is the actual document that's, uh, approved by the board and signed off by the board president and secretary and forwarded to our taxing authorities to actually, um, collect taxes based upon these rates. That's, uh, in the packet for approval later on down in the agenda. Another, just a quick reminder, what is on there? So for General Fund, there's a tax levy that's requesting 18 mils for this coming year for our operating millage. In terms of the, um, the, uh, Building and Site Sinking Fund, there is a levy on there requesting one, 1.9, that's, excuse me, 1.9265 mils levy after the adjustment for the millage reduction fraction. And then the debt service is at 7.491. I guess I, I thought about it, I probably wanna make the debt piece a little clearer. It is, is exempt from the process of the millage reduction fraction because it's voter authorization of a limited way you need to pay off the authorized debt. So that's why that doesn't change, it's still 7.491, um, on the levy request. Any questions on the tax levy?
Questions? All right.
On to the next item?
Please.
The, uh, first, uh, the final amendment for this fiscal year, this first reading. And then just to remind you, the, the total impact in terms of the first reading document is a little different than what I just showed in the earlier taxation hearing. That's known, that's the, uh, draft, what I refer to as the Draft One. The difference is, the Draft One makes, uh, certain ballpark assumptions of impact of a rate, of a, uh, a funding cut and our reaction to it. And that, what it really is, is, and based on the knowledge we have at this point, is our educated best guesses. Whereas the document that's falling under this category as the first reading and final amendment is the information that we do know now and what's con, and contained in the actual, um, amendment proposal. So for a quick review of some of the highlights, I guess if you can call them highlights, that's contained in there, the, uh, local revenue is down roughly 300 and some thousand dollars, reflecting the fact that we shut down in March. Um, a, uh, outside of property tax levy, the other piece that makes the, uh, a chunk up of the local sources, these that arrive, you know, uh, revenues from fees and tuitions. And those stopped basically as of March. So that's why that, that piece is down. Um, our state source revenue has a jump, there's, it's reflecting a prior year of funding adjustment that the state gets through to us. I, I believe it actually showed up in our April state aid. Um, I might be wrong on that, it might have been, uh, in the March, but it's a prior year adjustment that shows up. Usually they're not that big. Um, in this case, it's 362,000, so it does, this is showing up on this adjustment. And that's what's driving the state source pieces and on the, uh, federal revenue side. Uh, several changes in terms of final award to multiple grants. And keep in mind, some of these grants, we get an initial award mid-year, midway through the year, there's an indication of where we're landing. But many times during the final amendment process, if, if districts aren't using up prior year awards, they get redistributed to those who do use it. And those, and similar things like that, they can push up a final award amendment. And, um, this year, our, our final, uh, federal aid, uh, federal revenue is up roughly 300,000. And the big driver there is, uh, head start and early head starts and a couple of the title grants that are all federal money. The final awards were higher than what we had projected at the, uh, the Amendment One process. Our other revenue categorical line is, or, excuse me, other, other revenue category line is down 106,000 dollars. The reason that's down, that, that line is predominantly funded, or is really, I shouldn't say, it's comprised of operating transfers in from our other funds. Uh, meaning our, our, um, the Pine Tree Center Fund, the, uh, Community Service Fund and the Food Service Fund, all give, uh, back to the general fund what we refer to as operating transfers. And really what it is, is it's their coverage for, you know, back office operations, payroll, that kinda stuff. So in terms of, uh, funding exchange and how they help pay for that. So related to the food service and the community service, because they are fee and tuition driven and because they pretty much stopped as of March, in terms of the general fund, in an attempt to stop, uh, the bleeding, to use a bad phrase, or an old phrase in terms of about the reduction in those two fund balances, we reduce the operating transfer back, due back to the general fund for this year, those last three months. Really like, for example, the food service fund balance, continue, you know, continue to pay employees and pay for food for, for child distribution and continue to pay employees in the community service fund. So this is one way that we can mitigate the damage to those fund balances without material damage to the general fund side of the equation. Um, in terms of expenditures, there were several small changes as usual, but a couple notable ones. Um, custodial services, we reduced, uh, just under 200,000 dollars, primarily driven again by our shutdown in March. And aside from the shutdown from March, as employees went unemployment from the reimbursed services, there's just no use to the points. Um, so that piece is bringing that line down. On the flip side of that, transportation's made an adjustment upwards based on the activity prior to the shutdown. Um, it's really driven by two things in transportation world that were, we're short on drivers. So we're driving, um, multiple drivers on an overtime status. So it's costing more than originally budgeted for from a payroll point of view. And because there's more qualifying, or more drivers getting qualifying hours, they're now qualifying for benefits of healthcare. So it's kind of a compounding. Um, so those are really two examples of two, the, the bigger changes. And then there's more, like I said before, multiple small changes. I'd be more than happy to address any questions? Oh, before I forget too, as we, as we move into the June 24 final meeting, if we have specific knowledge of a, uh, negative budget supplemental, this will be changing to reflect that. Um, everyone is expecting it to impact our fiscal year 20 in terms of the original cut that's expected. And then, um, so, and once we know exactly what it is, then we would do it. Literally, even if it's in July, when they announce it, we, we'd likely bring a one-page resolution, a budget resolution change to reflect it in our final year. Any questions?
All right, questions for John? So we're looking at what amounts to be an interim step in the process.
Yeah, that's a fair way to say it.
Yep. Okay, so we'll be reviewing this again with some upcoming changes, likely, very likely. Yes, Jake?
So for these changes that we anticipate through the current fiscal year doing a budget amendment, uh, we've been very much praised by our auditors over the past several years for, uh, the, the financial controls and our budgeting. Uh, do we, the, is that enough to have that resolution passed after the fiscal year for them to say, well, Jesus, you put in a $4 million adjustment after the fact? But I just wanna make sure that we give you a chance to talk about how you're protecting, how all these things do protect us from, yeah, our, our great ratings that we do have.
Yeah, from, i- if we were the only district experiencing this, it would be a big problem. It's gonna be district or statewide, every district's gonna have, have a, a last-minute, unmeasurable change. So from an audit perspective, um, they probably won't like it, but in terms of everyone being involved, it's, it's out of our control in that context. If we didn't recognize the, uh, uh, the, uh, post-June 30 material change like that, they'd probably bring it up to the audit process as to why we didn't recognize. We're almost in a catch-22 situation on it because of the likely timing. Um, we can on the 24, I, to be perfectly frank, I'm hoping by the time of the 24th meeting rolls around, that there's some, there's some concrete communication coming out of Lansing that says it's gonna be this at this time, so we can do something and then have the documentation support showing why we did it. Um, we always had the choice on the 24, when we bring it back for second reading, to put in a very large reduction on the revenue side based on an assumption. But then we expose ourselves again from an auditor's point of view, if it doesn't occur until next fiscal year. You know, so it's gonna be, it's going to be that challenge and there's a bit of a catch-22 on it.
Is that, uh, answer for you, Jake?
Uh, yeah, I just, I, I like getting it out there on the record that, that we as a board are looking at it and, and of course, you know, John is on top of this situation. So no one should be worrying about the, you know, fiduciary control. I mean, the financial side of what the impact could be to us is something we should worry about. But the, the fiduciary and the reporting side, no one, I don't have any concerns that, that we're not, that John and, and his team are not on top of that.
Okay. I would, I, I appreciate it, I, I, I think our controls are, are top tier and in great shape. The issue is that the numbers we're controlling just are not good numbers. No.
Good, thank you.
Okay, others? All right, John, anything else?
All set, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then, uh, Finance Committee Report?
There is no report.
Okay, thank you. Facilities Liaison?
No report.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moves us to action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move that we approve the following consent agenda items. Approve minutes from the May 27th, 2020 regular meeting in closed session, the May 21st, 2020 Policy Committee Meeting, and the May 28th, 2020 Lamp of Learning Committee Meeting. Also approving the Head Start Coordinators Report.
Uh, may I have a second?
I support that.
Thank you. Any questions? Julie?
Um, before I start, can I make sure everybody is unmuted?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Uh, Mr. Buckey? Mr. Drakos?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Marmel?
Yeah.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weidman?
Yes. Motion to approve the consent agenda is passed. All right. Moving on. We have a motion to adopt the 2020, 2021 HSAA membership resolution.
A move that we adopt the 2020, 2021 Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution as presented.
Is there support?
I support that.
Thank you. Any questions? Julie?
Uh, Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weidman?
Yes. The motion to adopt the MHSAA membership resolution passes. Uh, finally, may I have a motion to approve the tax rate levy?
A move that we approve the annual tax rate request from L4029 for municipalities as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Any questions? Julie?
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Marmel? Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weidman?
Yes. Motion to approve the tax rate levy is approved. All right. Finally, recaps and recap and next steps.
Um, the only thing is that, uh, I'm assuming that I can notify my colleagues that our board did not support the, uh, moving forward on the enhancement knowledge.
Is there anybody who is in support of that? So we can say with one voice that, uh, that's not where we're at this time.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, closing comments. Let's, uh, begin with, get this organized here. John?
Uh, nothing further.
All right. Rick?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Heidi?
Nothing further.
Uh, Marion?
No, I have nothing tonight.
All right. Thank you. Nate?
Yeah, uh, Marion, I really appreciate the letter that you read in at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I just want to express to the diverse community and today especially our black teachers, staff, students, parents, family and community, that while I can't begin to know what it feels like to walk in your shoes, I can let you know I care and am united with you. You matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Jake?
Yeah, what struck me is the end of a school year that normally, this is the last board meeting of this school year. And we've thanked the teachers and we thank the administrators, but I want to take a special time to thank the students. That when we closed, when we had to close schools a few years ago, we talked about how the kids are resilient. And I think it shows in time again that our students, we threw a lot at them. They had to change and every couple of weeks, things had to change. And they adapted and they rolled with it. And I just want them to know that we do everything for them. Like, we want to put out the best experience for students and their ability to adapt and make the best out of everything that we provided. We realize it wasn't, wasn't ideal. Ideal would be you're having your end of year celebrations and everything would be happening with your friends and your teachers. But know that we're all thinking about you and everything we're doing is to try to keep you safe and to, and to give you the best education possible. So thank you, students, for doing what you did and, and working with us so well.
Thank you, Jake. Dana?
Um, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Burgett?
Uh, nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And I, I would like to close, uh, in the same, uh, thought that Jake had is that these difficult times that we've had through the course of this year are going to temper us and, uh, make us better in the long run. And as has been the case so many times in Lake Orion, that, uh, through teaming up of all the people who are part of this Lake Orion Community Schools, uh, will come out of this much better and things are going to get better. It's not going to be without challenges, but things will get better. And, uh, it would be because of all the people in this, this community. So on that note, we are...
Okay. Yassir. Bye-bye.
Yes, Julie?
Steve had it. I don't, I don't know if Steve got closing comments for him.
No, that's okay. I think I've been talking.
Oh, I am sorry.
No, no, no. I've been talking.
He kind of, he kind of popped out of the screen there. Steve, please.
No. First of all, um, wow, Jake, you said it perfectly. And then Jim had the opportunity, same thing. It, I just want to remind our young students to be safe too. Be safe as we all talk about driving, everything. Just be safe. And I'm very proud of our students, our staff, our principals, our cabinet, our board members. And we're going to do well. Thank you, Jim. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much, Steve. All right.
God bless. Bye-bye.
Hearing, uh, no other comments?
Jimmy, you're muted. You want to call the meeting to a close? Jim?
I did once, but I'll do it again. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Good night, Jim.